You've got to discuss your own many, you know. Minutes.
He gets the boots.
No, I don't. These, these are the only boots I can wear that don't hurt my feet. But the grippers on the bottom, they're like, like a month later, they fall off.
Really?
Yeah. But the boots will last, I mean, they're not, there's not holes in the bottom.
Right.
It's just like a glue on grip.
I saw a piece of tape.
Yeah. They gray taped them, yeah, they're good for now.
Oh, yeah, gray taped.
Take a pair of fires and pull them off.
Man, Mars gray tape boots.
It's zebra skin. The zebra skin duct tape.
Oh, yeah.
For me, maybe.
That's polka dot skin.
Some of that mustache, you can get one with the mustache on it.
Just goes so fast, he throws the ripper on.
Some days I feel like.
Well, he works out, I know that much. More than I do.
Yeah.
Lacy run thirteen miles yesterday down there.
I dreamed I did that one.
Do this one, forget it'll go off.
Could you double check that number if I can, I forgot to call you this morning, I just don't see it. Call Stephanie.
Then we're gonna hook the bed and your under take, take from your.
Is that how you want to do it? Is that okay?
If that was you guys.
Yeah, yeah, if that's okay with y'all.
We'll, we'll drop down and get them digging that, so they can take a coffee.
Yeah, and that way we can just do it all right now and be done with it, if that's okay with you guys.
They're all, they're all over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Who, who else over there?
I didn't bring my phone in either. Um, I can, I can step out here, is it, I'm just calling, which one were you needing now? What top one there? We have it as point one one.
Is it point one zero?
Yeah. If there's any change on that.
Can I use your phone?
Sure. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have thought of that earlier, but I just don't see it.
Well, I should probably check with her.
What's it about?
Hurt one of our inventory numbers.
Well, we can, if we just make note of meeting, it'll be all right, right?
Well, we gotta make sure that August is right and.
The number's right?
Yeah. And that changed it.
I was gonna tell Jay, go ahead and put her up here too, but I don't sense her sitting here.
It is eleven. Okay, that's what my vision.
I'll make permission to approve the things. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna deviate from the gin, then drop down and open the beds for a couple of days, we can take. Did you hear me?
One bit, Smith.
Yeah. Is my line? Oh, I got one. Got to be.
That's how I got rid of his kidney stones, he cut them out.
It is eleven. It is eleven, okay. Or good thing, because I think this part, put it on the agenda.
Well, because, uh, did that come with Lacy?
Mm-hmm.
Because she said she had talked to Lacy.
Well, she just forgot to, I forgot to ask her again about it, so, yeah.
Lacy had run thirteen miles yesterday.
We had, we had. Made the change, but I wanted to make sure, and I put it on the agenda that way, so we're good.
Because she come in limp, and I said, what happened to you with this stuff? I run thirteen miles yesterday, so, oh, boy.
You didn't go walk?
Walked on TV, the girl that won was from Grilting, Forgan.
Is that right? Well, be day.
I got some big Metropolis a fork.
That would've been me, I think I would've been living in. I don't think I would be coming in.
I'd still be walking.
I couldn't ride a bicycle that far.
I'd still be lost halfway.
Hold on, my motorcycle, baby.
Can't make a motorcycle go thirteen miles?
It's been there, now I may get that far.
I don't get to bow in there, stop killing.
You don't, no you don't. Kind of tied up for a while, aren't you?
Yeah, I am.
Hold a lot less sign.
Yeah, but I'll bow it upside, do I?
Hang on, let's move to start putting the spot, this, have sign, put a good sign there.
Don't, don't show up in here, just, you don't exist, brought you.
That's fine, that's fine.
The bid is from Cummins Construction.
Yeah.
You may, you could be up that one. We did the blacktop that year, it was ninety-one.
So these are the beds that we've gotten for the.
The one bed we got for the asphalt, yes. Phase one, which is our parts, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Phase two, that was on the east side of the photograph.
I think that's, is that where it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Was forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty. And phase three, was, is eighty-six thousand.
Okay.
They're all even, yeah, they, yeah, I hope, that's why they use the numbers even. Now, I didn't put a time limit on it, because their main bread and butter's highways.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because when I was doing down at McQuilly, they had to pull off, and they promised to be right back, and they had to go to Nash, and right east to Nash, that deal, two days later, they came back, so.
So you feel like that'll be done within a reasonable amount of time?
I hope, they won't, too, yeah, a lot of times they'll.
My, my concern, just, just so y'all know, when you go to getting this in a timeline.
Right.
The June out there for me is tied, often tied, I've got precinct official training in there, the first week, we skip a week, then we start early voting, plus the election. That June out there for me, as far as the front of it there, is not going when I need it to happen, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they want to come, though, we're gonna have to let them come, because they're.
Well, we'll have to find out how.
Do they work on one of the other sides?
The sides would be fine.
Okay.
Sides aren't, the sides would be fine.
I'm sure they don't want to do it all at one time.
Oh, I see, I see.
Pretty well, well, they got all their equipment, they're not gonna want to do it all.
Because they'll, they work late in the summertime.
Yeah.
Okay.
To make up for what they miss in the wintertime, most of them.
Okay.
So, do you want to go ahead and accept ours, or wait till the whole deal, or what?
I think, well, they might get up and do it all on one.
That's what I was thinking, yes.
Does that, does that only bid?
Only bid, yes.
Correct.
Does that feel in line with you guys, what you thought coming?
That's the last one I thought was gonna be.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I thought that, I know we could've got that front down for ninety-one thousand, when I did my blacktop up there in Arlington. The DA would have signed off, so it could do it, so it's a hundred and twenty-five now, self on it. But I figured it'd be a hundred and thirty-five, but maybe I scored a hundred and fifty, so that's what I thought.
Just, and, and maybe I need to ask you, just so I'm clear, are we leaving that cement pad there that's there right now, and we're gonna?
As far as.
Kind of, we're gonna add some dirt, so it's not such a great slope up to it, or how, what are we, are we basically just?
Pretty hard to do.
Okay.
Because we. It's better off, you got a good base now, if you put dirt in there, you're gonna have to.
Okay.
And I want to cut, I want to cut that down to where it comes right up to the.
Right up to the cement, even with the cement.
Right.
Okay.
And they will help us do this, part of it, that stuff, they'll.
Okay.
But, now, like your pickup sliding the ice is still gonna slide back in the ice sitting there, I mean, it's just. I don't know, I would, I'm sorry.
Going to the sidewalk, like the end, your east building there, they're gonna try to come up level and sit the same way with the foundation on the big building.
Yeah, the big.
They're gonna come up level with that.
Right. The less work, keep out underneath.
Comes down to, and, uh, that's the way it was, we talked to them about it.
Yeah.
Right.
Now, I have to either do some hand stuff around in front of where Kelly and helping you guys, because there's.
Can it go out?
Yeah.
They actually leave it down a little bit lower than the concrete, so when we come back in, put a sealer on it, it won't be.
Don't need a sealer.
You won't need a sealer. It won't. No, no.
Sealer's just liquid stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You won't, you won't need a sealer, just put an overlay on it and hang it.
Yeah, just, yeah, it'll be good for years. Not to kill some grass.
Yeah, we gotta kill some grass out there.
We have, yeah, but they'll come out and talk to us and.
Okay.
Tell us what we need to do. I can give you Mike Byers' phone number, of course, you can catch him, but, because he's pretty busy in the summertime.
Mike's really good, he's.
Do you want to make copies of this and this and there, or just take? You'll see us too. Go ahead, I think it's a good deal.
We're speech three yet?
Huh?
You told me, phase two is the east side.
Phase three's on the west side.
West side.
Goes clear down, even with that building.
Even with the end of the indoor arena.
Yes, and that's the reason they hurried up and got their other electrical pedestals in there.
Got their RV hooked up, so I'll put it in there and.
I need, like, to have more gradual slope, I'm sorry about how.
Well, I think there's gonna be, for them, I don't, I don't think that they can have that type of slope. I think that'd be too steep of a slope, considering this parking.
Need company?
You'd think, somebody oughta.
If you cut it down level with your blacktop, maybe we can put that dirt just right out here, I mean, your, that cement deal.
Say that again, Toby.
Cut them down, in three inches, on each side of that cement.
On the helicopter pad?
Yeah, whatever you wanna call it.
And then, then they're gonna try to come out well, from that level with that cement pad out there.
Whoa, they can do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the pad needs to stay at the level with, with everything, just because of handicap and all that good stuff.
Right.
But. They try to get them to at least come out somewhat, where, you know, can't even set your pickup or anything else at least, you know, an angle that can't.
Makes it more of a gradual slope.
I mean, come on.
Yeah.
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 See if there's a little something, I don't know why, I mean, like, that doesn't have to be the whole thing, I mean, they can finally get out there, but as far as just at least enough to park, get up on, instead of just that immediate drop.
Right.
And that's what we talked about that day we were out there, he was gonna make that because it's handicap.
Exactly.
Yeah.
He said, we, we can make it right, and he understood about.
What we're looking at.
Too much of the slope.
Yeah.
The way I understood it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we're not, but, but we're probably, we're probably, once will be around. One or two, so it'll be around, probably.
Yeah, definitely, we're.
Oh, yeah, I'll be around.
I'll be around.
It's amazing to watch that machine.
Oh, yeah, maybe in the middle of the machine, I don't know yet.
No, no, you better, yeah.
Drop, drop back down and get them an old one, go over there.
Do you want to do Kelly and get her done?
Oh.
I mean, it's, it's whatever, I mean, if I need to be here for that, I can be, that's, I mean, I just wanted to be sure we had bids on this, uh. Parking lot, that's all I was really concerned with, so.
Okay.
And I think, Lina, we're good on numbers and all that good stuff, so, as far as I'm concerned, we're good, unless you guys have got questions going on that.
No, we, I, well, we can.
Can't do anything anyhow.
You can stay all day if you want, we don't care.
I need some work.
Huh?
Yeah, it gives us another.
I've got money to do out there.
It gives us another pretty lady to look at.
Do it with M and O soon, or inventory?
Like, do what?
Which one are we doing?
Like, she has to go with M and O, she, she don't need to be in there.
I didn't know which pile we had.
Oh, we don't want this one.
Oh, yeah, we didn't, let's get it over with. You're cheating again, Stan, you get all the money.
I know.
I bet every one of the people in your office is working there in a car, Barry.
A lot of them in there, I think.
Yeah. Okay, Kyle?
I'll take you, I'll take it.
Who are they gonna fire, the Thunder, or the coaches, or what? The head, or what?
Not gonna fire anybody.
Who are they getting rid of?
Hopefully Mellow.
Huh?
Hopefully Carmelo. Nobody signed George.
poorly.
It's not, I mean, everybody, the coach is gonna make all the grind, but. When you play a team six times in a row, and you still can't stop the same offense they've been doing the whole time, that's not so much on the coach. These players are getting paid more than the coaches are getting paid.
Dave's thirty, ain't it?
Yeah.
They should learn to make it.
I think it's Mike's.
Playing lazy defense is not fundamental basketball.
Well, it's the reason them teams got rid of those guys, you know, those big, big, big things they had.
George can be good. He just didn't like the series, I mean, he wanted it.
You don't gotta play much defense, when there's twenty-four seconds left, until the ball starts to get to the ball in.
But you gotta play some of that defense.
Right.
What you use, use despairing ink there? Fuck, you use despairing ink there. Yeah, despair.
You're saying despair?
It was like air commission.
Feels like, did they get the bearings in that deal last night?
Uh, I'm always here to ask. No cash, Anthony?
What?
Did you know, cash, Anthony? Probably don't be the member, I can't either. The one whose daughter, she passed away. Yeah, you got David Alston. Well, you oughta know, I said, David, I'm not seventy-five years old. So that should be sixty-two. Yeah. They have another, another daughter, she's married, she's married to, uh, uh, well, June, uh, Cecil Thorpe. The last meeting. Those are the highlight people I had, was at Convention Hall or. Center, where, that's where I was at.
It was a weird address, I'm excited on that. Postcard lines the date of the year. Shepherd, it was at the Holiday Inn Express, west of town. I wasn't, that wasn't the address.
Well, that'd be, well. It'd have to be, uh. Well, no, uh, called Fort Twelve, or?
No, it was like. Mid Trail, mid something.
Could be at Holiday Inn back behind there, not on that, they got, they're on that dang off street there. Well, gee, Bruce.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
For some reason, they're coming back through there, miles. You like, put that old blacktop there, three miles south of McQuilly. They come back, put one four miles south of McQuilly. If you look up, east side here, Grandma, Grandpa's place, they got one arrow there, they put another one now, farther north.
Well, they was, um. Out of those, shoulder belts, anywhere there's one of those, they were screwed, and we were to get away from those, because of all those shoes that they would have to.
Oh, yeah, well.
They still don't want to.
Underneath there. Well, Gina DeRousse has got six quarters ground, like, out, out in Garfield County, want to go through it. He don't even want them there, I said, he's got plenty of money, so. I wouldn't ask him to be a joint, though, I really wanted to, but. I went upstairs, I was tending bloody files. Gads got pulling any money. When you bid against Sinwell, three quarters of ground, one summer, the way it'd be, yeah. It went hard, people ain't hurt nothing. I had one person tell me twenty nineteen, but I still believe when I see it.
About the twenty eighteen, no.
Forget what?
About the twenty eighteen, no, in Alabama.
Wow. Face keeping me awake. A lot of paper right there.
Yeah.
Key. For twenty-seven dollars.
Yeah. Got a lot.
Gee.
Something about it. If you find a shock at that today, let me know.
Good gosh.
What, Thunder Arena down there, because I think Christina's setting the seats up in Loud City, we're on ten dollars a seat or something like that. I think it's attached to what's going, because.
You can get them pretty cheap, you can get them thirty-three dollars.
She likes setting up in Loud City up there. Okay. Come back very quick. Yeah. Oh, my, I'm setting in here.
You guys, you guys can all come in here.
No, we're. Were you gonna rerun the bids on the rest?
Yes, they're on the agenda today, yeah.
So I'm gonna block the camera.
I know that.
Put your hat in.
I know that, right up there.
I've, I've seen those guys. Maybe we got the big ones. Clamp and papers, I remember the relation, Jed Clamp, or Jethro?
Ellen A, that's a.
Yeah, Ellen A, yeah. They love that show. Plus, all the time.
They just, if they just send it in, and they just say.
I ran over, well, they got plenty of fucking trees and whatever, missing it.
This is your.
Well, I mean, they don't specify, they don't agree.
Okay.
What grade they're, is.
You wanna get yourself on the deal, make your stand up, right?
I am not court paid, that's.
Your girls like them.
They do, like.
I don't like guitars, sit down, I mean.
Yeah, signing autographs up there, or?
Oh.
They make you so popular.
This is, this is the worst part about the job.
Usually spend the running time.
Yeah, that's what I think.
None of them people's money. Yeah, can't even read much of that picture now.
Just scribble, huh?
By the end of that batch, yeah. J and, J and Stance is still readable, but Toby lies by the end of the batch.
I gotta say, well, yeah, you don't read it.
Can't read mine at the beginning of the batch.
But Wesley's was just.
He signed left-handed.
Yeah, I'm a panda.
It'd probably be left, either if I did it left-handed.
Chad never signed the same way twice.
No, mine ain't either, if you look at them. Yeah, Chad just kept throwing that beat.
I figured the auditor would look at him, no, these are forged.
I didn't know which one was forged, though.
That's true. They just, they just look for one that ain't right. Like I kept telling Chad, you know, autograph's gotta find something, the boss is gonna not be happy.
I'm moving Stephanie, I'm gonna go on. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And, we'll go back. Very good, you all accepted.
Yeah, we accepted that, I do have a couple of questions.
Good.
And you always have afterthoughts when you're doing something?
Oh, yeah.
We thought about putting some asphalt in front of the approach that goes up to that shop. It's a big rock, and there's a lot of water that washes through there, and just kind of keeps it muddy and wet. Is there anything, can we do anything? How, if we wanted to put a little bit more asphalt there, how, can we include that in this on a, on a, on any way, or is it, is this, that's something completely different than what we would do?
No, you can't add it to this bid now.
Okay.
They're here, and you want to make it.
We can, okay.
You can see if they'll do that for you while they're there, but as far as anything on this bid.
Right.
What's on this bid is what we've got to go by.
Okay, that's, okay, okay, that was the only thing I didn't, I didn't know about.
So would there be another bid necessary for just that small area?
Depends how much it is.
Depends on their man.
Right, and that may be what we do whenever they're here, we'll just kind of show them what we want, see what they charge us to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For hollow riding, I had a time and say, unless you think this would be to do a little bit of this, and if it's under that fifteen thousand.
Okay.
If you're under fifteen.
It's not a real big area, but it would kind of help keep from tracking dirt and stuff up in there and, and anything else, and.
I mean, we kept the bid, I'll second it.
What account does Arthur is coming out of?
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
And then on the dirt work, I guess, they'll tell us what we need to do, or, or, I mean, you guys will do your part, and then do our part, or whatever.
Jay's not mean.
Okay.
I know Jay's mean.
Jay's not mean.
Jay and I, we're metal, the guy, and we look at it, they take, take a whole lot.
You don't, you don't get the whole lot of, you can't be part for dirt work, or whatever, really.
Okay, okay, all right.
You want a copy of this, real quick?
Um, it doesn't have to be right now, but sometime, yeah, that'd be great.
Kelly might want one, too.
Need it?
To heck with Kelly.
What'd you do to him, Kelly?
I don't know.
She's thinking what she's gonna do to him, maybe.
Exactly. I didn't, I didn't earn it yet, but I might.
I talked to him for a really good reason, Caesar started, I wrote up, shout out Frost, big area, well, they're all big area, yeah. I knew Troy told me earlier, he do, he wanted to do it all at once.
All right.
That should be nice, and I can go cut donuts out there.
We got cameras.
Thanks, guys, for. I will look.
Hey, come on, you're.
Here, thank you, guys.
Oh, I'll talk to Mike Byers, and see if they got somewhere to plant it in there, or what, but, uh, it depends on the rain and everything in the world, but. I would say, if they were here and everything's right, they could do it two days.
Oh, yeah, should be.
That's what I was saying, I hope that one will turn this pretty quick.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll make it over Eden, just haul down.
They'll get haul in the trucks, and keep them coming, and keep the.
We'll all have a couple of days notice, or something.
I hope, yeah, I'm gonna tell them, you need to roll ahead of time, come out, come out, see what you want, no, we can do what you're gonna do, and.
When you get grass sprayed, killed, and everything, then, a real work.
Well, you know, we're in their backyard, they like to do good work around here, so they can brag about it, but look at this programs over here, this, you know, which is good. Yeah. I don't know how many people they sent down the McQuilly blacktop. I'm, I'm down there.
Yeah, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
You may.
People are walking around us, you guys need some help, well, come and send, come out and look at this.
I don't think you can just kind of go put a sign up, it says, uh, parking lot done by Cummins Construction.
We'll do, well, if we'll put a big bill or they'll do it for free. Right? We'll make a, I'll get something, we'll build a bill.
Well, they can put a marquee up there if that's water.
Yeah, that's water, yeah.
Blanket purchase order.
Not sign that one, we just acknowledge of that one. So, so, so.
Need just acknowledge, acknowledge.
Write the blanket purchase orders, okay. Well, Kyle, all them guys, they brought in, I don't know about them. There's a reason other places don't go.
Those district ones.
There's one district one, and then we missed one on four. Last week, he just didn't, didn't see there was multiple ones in the pile.
Yeah, 'cause I was waiting for them high line people, you know, our moms have sex, you could not turn our mom's place, and her mom gets them out there, she might shoot them. Right?
No, not anymore.
All circular, all in favor?
Aye. She's mellow machine.
Road crossing permit, Toby, I don't know whether we want to.
I believe we accept.
That's right, that's right.
Second.
Do what I'm trying with?
Road crossing permit, we're gonna give it to him.
Stan and Jay?
Aye.
Oh, we didn't, who made the motion on the fair board? I don't think you ever made a motion.
On the fair board.
Jay made the motion.
Hank Tucker.
Well, Hanky Tucker.
I got T H, H T, it'll be T H, H T.
I'm quiet.
Just don't get me.
Just don't get me T H C. So, sometime here, what, in, end of May, first of June, we start pushing on stuff in the newspaper about.
What's the date of that election? It's the last Tuesday.
Twenty-six, that's why they can buy the drink. Ideally, I had it for every paper on the back page, and I mean, people, whatever, business they wasn't having, everything else or whatever.
We're gonna try similar stuff. He said all these stories.
I don't think we'd get that any planer, Kelly, if they can't understand that, they better quit. They better quit.
We had, when, we did all these state questions, where the last time we got with Higman and went through them all, he kinda gave us a layman's term and didn't stop people upset because we had put the ballots in. Like, we just went through thirty-four weeks of explaining to you what all these state questions are, 'cause when you get to the polls, no one can understand them.
Can't make people happy. Where, where are these? So, where are these? Where are these at?
Is that district ones?
Yeah.
It's pretty far up north, I think it's on the west side.
District.
No, sure.
Twenty-nine, okay.
Yeah, I got a freebie, yeah, that's true. That's, uh, the old. Uh, Moss House Burlington there, where Danny Pointe bought that property in their house, and there, they're running water out of the town of Burlington down there.
Well, we did the existing handhold of this, but. Six twenty-eight nine to thirty-one twenty, well, it's major road, okay, sorry. I was thinking, whoa now. Been night there.
I won't let you do anything but.
Oh, no.
I'm gonna see Terry.
I don't wanna be controlled by that.
I'm gonna see if Terry Means will adopt me. Oh, and he's got another one he's got now.
Amazing, yeah, those guys, get them and get them and get them.
Well, just keep drilling over there.
I'll tell you what, you can leave McGlue in one, all the way to the highway there, going north, and you'll walk on Terry Mean's property.
Right. Look around Carmen, you know, they got, they'll have four wells on the pad and drill another one.
Yeah.
And that, that one rig's been there almost two years. And you look in a Cherokee paper and what's the section, it's Town of Carmen's on it, oh, Lord, I ought to research that, and good luck. Oh, yeah.
He could go back up north and start.
He called my wife, yeah, Terry Mean's got property.
We don't have way, no, no.
Uh, McLeod, Cozy Curve.
That's right.
All along that creek.
All, all the way along that creek.
Or, old gene.
Can drill around Cherokee somewhere.
It does.
I'll make a motion approved.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
We already did that.
What?
We did?
Oh, yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Well, that's for the next one, right?
You're mulling.
Toby, don't mess this up anymore. What's making them?
I already have the initials there.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Oh, Stan did that, yeah, that's all right.
Okay, County Corps to go out on bids for remodeling existing raccoons and the GED facility at Alphaband County.
I'll make a motion approved.
You guys will sign those specs?
That was like eight dollars a piece.
So you made the motion, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Just copy it again, we're sending it out. This time to Teff Plummy, KC Electric, Luckinville, and Suenor Electric.
Teff Plummy, that's UCLA.
Lamont?
Lamont, yeah. Nobody bid last?
Are these the same ones?
No, they're not the same. I mean, you can send it again, but you gotta send it to three new ones. He was gonna check with Langston, just the top of the spec page that, yeah, that you guys looked at the specs and approved them. Um, he's gonna check with that Langston again and see if they won the bid again, 'cause they didn't bid it last time.
That was when you said it did the.
They did the specs for him, yeah.
That's weird. Plus those specs are not right, found something wrong. Main thing it needs is a installation.
I changed.
County Corps to go out on bids for material, labor, and equipment for Alphaband County GED two bridge, number twenty-one oh nine, located on Cockner Road between County Road five forty and County Road five fifty. Boy, it's a motion.
Um, I asked, and they said they did not want a material list, so I changed it from one page to two pages up there, but as we signed that.
They didn't want a bridge to material.
That's what I was told, so if you guys want something different, please tell me, 'cause they're.
Another word, they got their own material in the yard.
No, you can't use your material in the yard. She said that because it had on their bill to ODOT specifications, they didn't have to put it on there, so I'm just going by what I was told.
Well, probably will, on that, worse than that, is the sale of. Well, I see, I see. Fifty-ton rating or higher, built to OCA. That'd be quite a deal.
Boy, kind, Terry. Makes sense, do you?
If he uses ODOT specification, it'd be all right. Set one's gonna be able to get that.
Uh. The forty-five foot ones.
Yeah.
Makes sense, do you?
Yeah, that, that's ODOT specs, so.
ODOT specs.
That leaves Newt out.
So we just want to sign in front of this, too.
That leaves New Roberts out.
It's the second one.
There's your second.
I need a motion on that first one.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same way with the, exactly, I don't want the agenda. County Road five ninety, County Road two eight, big number twenty-two sixty-eight.
Need a motion, I'll be up to you.
On the same way, there was no, um, material list.
All in favor?
Hoop to hoop?
Aye.
Stan make the motion?
Yeah.
Second. You gotta talk louder.
Work's whispering over here.
I noticed. Just starting to make forty-five there.
Same way with T F one, County Road five eighty, and Commandant Cove, road bridge.
And no material list.
No, good.
Who they want to send them out to?
Um, I have to look at this, Horn, Robert Guard, River Ridge, Rick Deets, and S C three, the one that butchered. Last one, she called me this morning and wanted to send it to that.
S C three.
That's it, outfit that's building that bridge.
Well, big, big bridge. By the cone, yeah.
Very interesting bid.
Was that?
Down in Southern Oklahoma, Ada.
Really?
And they, they didn't get River Yard all the time, is what I heard.
Oh, that's the one there by Breezy, named Total, who plays it.
It's north of Glass Street.
Yeah, yeah, back eat it there, yeah, yeah.
She hasn't called me back with an address, but I Googled them and they were out of Ada.
I thought they were out of kids, they kept telling us, kids, it's getting me out of it.
I make a motion approved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
County Corps to go out on bids for oil and brush fire apparatus for Cherokee Rescue, Alphaband County.
This. The specs are on here, and each one of them has a meet or exceed, or they have brand names.
Apple.
They have brand names.
Oh, okay.
What?
Made the exceed brand?
Says meet or exceed.
Oh, okay.
Meet or exceed, yeah.
Like, we'll say, yeah, we can't hear.
Specifications.
Does Troy do that?
Um, sure.
Is he, does he figure that out, or who does that?
No.
Yes. We're having a problem, our fire station need more room, we get so much nice stuff. Adding on a gold tree. They got a girl, Johnny Nicholson, I should've told Dad, you can't get ten, stuff in ten-foot doors no more.
No.
Yeah, we're adding on a gold tree, uh, Escatungoo, they have nowhere to put stuff hardly.
Yeah, gold trees, they're putting those doors up last Wednesday.
Yeah, they were adding on there. It looks, the sales tax is great, it looks good.
It's on the front of the correct.
We got that stationed there in Helena, you know, getting backup, it's insulated with spray, cool foam.
This the one?
They got water.
Explains all the specifications on the unit and.
They can fill their trucks, I'll get them right in there.
Okay, this one.
I sent it to the land judge, to fire, um, chief fire, to J and J, who else can I send it to? An aggregate buyer. Do you think of anyone that I missed?
No, not that I can think of.
You didn't really think of anyone, and I thought, well, actually, we've sent two to before, but I thought if I'm missing, somebody let me know.
More than likely, Brank, they'll be in the running for it, they, that should be our rescue truck.
Now, this is a truck they're gonna get replaced two trucks, right?
I didn't know that.
That's what I understood.
Okay.
Whatever, whatever.
Probably correct, yeah. They got the moonies, though.
Somebody make a motion? Not yet.
I will.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Darn it.
I'll make the motion.
What else you want to come?
Do away with burn ban.
I talked to four fire chiefs last night. Cherokee. Burlington, Byron, and Escatungoo, and they said no, with the weather forecast.
It's gonna rain.
Thirty mile an hour winds, it's windy, it'll be sixty mile an hour winds, and, so, I'm bringing it up.
I second Stan's motion.
Is, is the state still, is it?
No.
Their state took Alphaband County out, Major County's in, Woods County's in.
Major County took that burn ban off.
Don't make a difference, the governor's still got her.
I know, Barbara County never did put one on.
But we're on.
We're on.
Yep.
Well, ours.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Are all opposed? Aye.
I told you, you have six foot of snow on the ground, you still got burn ban in your gun.
Toby, you've never been on a fire before.
I've been to a lot of fires, the grave and everything else. You know, I'm sorry, but you poor people up there can't take care of life and business.
There's several people that argue with you in western Oklahoma, on the four hundred and seven thousand acres.
Well, I know that, but. You don't know, you know.
I got seventeen farmers sitting there watching TV right now. That have told me that bullets will be coming my way if I put that burn ban on one more time.
Kelly's gonna burn too, I guarantee it.
I don't know who's gonna want to shoot at me, did the fire chief shoot better than the farmers? I don't know.
Fans have much whiskey, the farmers are carrying in their pickup.
Yeah, I have my phone, I know, I detect.
If you put it out, you're not following procedure any, if you're supposed to check somebody today, what the weather's supposed to get or not.
We're supposed to ask.
Yeah. FY eighteen nineteen detention services agreement, aye, between Sac and Fox Nation and Alphaband County.
Is it okay if we go ahead and do this as they come in? Otter says there's no problem with it, that way we don't forget them, but I just wanted to check with you guys.
What would I be?
We're pretty early, but.
Suits me, suits me, I don't have to hold them on my desk.
We don't have one long meeting.
Well, there's still a one long meeting, but.
Yeah. We're excited.
I'm very, very excited.
Yeah. Why, me doing it, because I know since, it was supposed to be the end of the year, or whatever.
They, they just trickle in them, in them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will get, how many I don't remember, will get.
I just, I just, when they began this early, I called and went, and they said, hey, you wanna hold them on your desk? I went, no, not really, and the commissioners are okay with it, do it. I'm okay.
Every day, taking Sac and Fox tribe, any.
Somebody can get something fancy, too.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little black captain, yeah, sorry, we gotta do stats sometimes. But have we done anything for Sac and Fox tribe?
Not so far.
I don't see them ever done anything, I don't think.
It is subject to change.
Any moments, yeah.
I move we accept the agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With the user.
There's a copy. Copy. This is just a review, let's not go up.
Yeah. Okay, I'll let you borrow this one.
I can do it. I didn't get that many percent, John.
Yeah, I started bringing mine in here. Gub's getting pretty dry. This gub's getting pretty dry.
I'll share with you, cuz.
I got my tea.
I'm gonna go first.
I got my tea.
There's plenty of cups if you're brown cup.
Yeah, they asked me the other day, and they're never coming here, they don't have one to get red and plate.
Like, they want a little bit, they're always high.
Yeah, yeah, they want, be sure and bid him again, he's got a different bidding.
Let's put those one into a, a four and a four B.
What, what, what?
Your limestone and your jet.
Oh, yeah.
Make sure that's okay, and I.
That was the one thing I remember.
I make sure I didn't.
That's the only thing I remember, Toby, myself.
More than I should have, on the sizes that you guys used. More than I should have, on the sizes that you guys used. I'll just go one through one page at a time. And tell me whether it's...
Well...
Page is okay or not.
That was big, it looked all right to me, that, who we send the bids to, let somebody else see something else.
Thank you for that, I like it much better than I know.
It's really, it's important.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Because it's, you get mixed up, you don't pay attention.
We did have a new company on the concrete.
Oh, really?
That Furman Construction from Alvin, so I added them. I don't know if that D and M construction is still in business.
I don't think so, but...
I'll mail it, if it comes back, then next time we can take them off.
I think you're correct on that, but I'm not hard to either.
Was that the one, was that the one here in Cherokee? No, did you say Furman?
Yeah.
From Alvin?
Four one look all right.
John Deere's hot for greater place.
Yes, yes, they are, I know that.
I know they would be.
I don't want anybody else to send bids to you myself.
Do you want me to send this asphalt to the C three?
Hmm, that, that I don't think.
I, I, you just said they bid against Rower Guard on things, I didn't know that.
Just on bridges.
Just on, so you want me on...
As far as I know, they're just...
On the material then, you want on the steel and pipe?
No.
No.
Where are they out of?
Ada.
That's right.
That's the, I, I just I Googled.
I asked that question.
Yeah, I think they're just bridge guys. If I find out I'm wrong, we can do it next time.
Concrete, yeah.
Lot better if you still pluck it, I tell you that much.
Mm-hmm.
It's a lot, lot better if we used to have it.
Yeah, we, we've got this, like, straightened up for the hill.
Well, when you got so many people on state contract like now, T and W Tire, and everybody else, yeah, they're not building, bidding lumber anymore.
Uh, rebar and ivies?
Yeah.
I don't see anything we need to add or change on that. Auto oil is way more on it than we'll, we'll use, but...
Yeah, sometimes those...
I just seem to leave it on there.
Sometimes those seven, eight, eight-foot tankers I use to, use them to replace the little wooden bridge, or little cement culvert. Because we've got a great big machinery now, I can't get across the little, little bridges and little cement bridges.
We got two deals on the rock now, because we separated some...
Separate, yes.
Some hip from the...
Is that how, are we labeled it, okay, cover material gypsum and cover material limestone?
Yes, I think that's perfect.
They don't understand it, it's...
Make sure I didn't take any sizes out that you guys used, because I changed some sizes, um... I don't remember which one, have you helped me? Somebody help me.
I did.
I guess, somebody did, I don't know.
Well, I talked to everybody, separating them out this time, that way there'd be a lot of issue.
Yeah, I, I think we're all right.
Your size is okay, right?
Yeah, because I went to Bow's Junctions on the three quarter inch, well, inch and a half, but, like, a jip rock would... It's listed inch and a half, that's about three quarter inch, go ahead.
The limestone, I'm going to Deleese's. And then just the ones that want everything, and then on the gypsum, I'm doing US gips, Martin Marietta, Hoskins, and Crowthers. Is there anybody else that needs to go, that limestone?
You.
Uh...
You can, uh...
One oka. Oh, that's limestone, he said, is some jip or limestone?
Either one, jip, I have US gypsum, Martin Marietta.
Martin Marietta's at Avaar, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Allied, Hoskins.
Allies, what's it, one oka, or Bow's Junction, ain't it? A G C, ain't it?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
And then Rick Crowthers. The only person I'm sending limestone to is Deleese's, so who else can we send limestone to?
I don't presume one of them...
I don't think you'll get any limestone, well, wait a minute. In, in Avaar, also, they get, they get, uh...
When Avaar gets us limestone, or limestone, they get either one, but...
They get both at Avaar.
Go to Deleese, go to Avaar, do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure Avaar's both.
Who's at Avaar?
You might send, yeah, both to Avaar.
Who's, who's at Avaar?
Uh, Martin Marietta.
So that's Martin Marietta, the both of them, and, right, and I'm sure do that.
I can tell you, it's gonna be...
Could Wood County haul a ton of bit out of there.
Yeah, it's pretty high.
They're pretty high, but they can justify it in the mottage.
Right.
Wait, okay, this time on the, all the sizes of pipe and the tanks.
Uh...
High.
Yeah.
Good, I'm on greater blades?
Greater blades, uh...
They haven't changed in fifty years, huh?
No, no, they haven't changed forever.
Good, on hot mix from asphalt?
I don't think it's old, yeah.
Same way.
Yeah.
Need a motion, I got it.
Yeah, please.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Elise.
Not okay.
Okay, I haven't thought the access even from District Two.
Okay, got a limestone and a bit broken.
Southwest quarter of twenty-nine twenty-six eleven, for use for shale pit or burn pit.
That's my deal.
Okay.
We'll see the jerk is or doesn't.
Good. I don't know what I want to sign.
It's not sure I do either.
Shale pit or burn pit, can we all use it? I can haul all the trees.
I'm talking about is it public use?
Yeah.
Did he put beer...
As long as I can, we can put a sign up there that says open to public use.
Right. Kelly must know where that is.
Oh, I'll figure that out.
It's real close. I move we accept it.
I second it.
All in favor, aye.
I can tell you real quick who that is.
Yeah, me, I know where.
We already had these up on here.
Somebody tried to buy it.
What, can't they buy it?
No. Chad Roach is landowner.
Yeah.
He was the one that was touching the shoe, shooting for the burn ban.
No, he wasn't, what? The big ones, the big ones that were talking to me weren't talking about cheating me, they were talking about looking.
We can always start places at one.
Let's do the, uh, the declarations at once, and then we can do the...
Right.
Uh...
Then we can do the resolution, okay? Get correct and cert.
The C three, you just...
I'm out.
Jay, on that top one, about halfway down, you need to sign in.
Oh, yeah.
District one ain't gonna have nothing left. Good, gosh.
Then we need to sign the bottom of everyone, but, yeah.
And it's not nay then, it was...
Abstain.
Abstain, that's what I...
I'm gonna say I'm not nay, what do you put me down here nay for, it's abstain. No, I gotta leave, can I?
There's a couple.
Lit, type, shut up.
What?
Lit, type, shut up.
I'm not signing it, no. Middle band, so how was that one, Jay?
Uh, older than you are.
Could be, could be. You got some, Kelly, I take it Kelly's got all her new computers, I think working good?
We're getting there.
Don't worry, don't worry, we'd hear about it if they weren't, so...
Yeah, nothing, nothing I can't get there with, no.
Good, good.
They are wonderful. We got to set up the VPN with the state the other day, and then what else?
Accepting...
Sure, plus.
Oh, it's the VPN's, the security network, the state's put in.
You have things.
Now the resolution.
I'm not touching any, I guarantee it, unless you... Unplug it, I would carry this, I'd be only...
So I know that, the, I'm gonna keep them in piles, is that...
Yeah.
Makes it easier for me.
I wish I could go ahead and do, uh, do this, because a lot of years you wait until November, I can tell you that much.
Would you sign the bottom of these, correct, anywhere?
Yes, yes, no, uh, no, no, I'm gonna sign those, I'm sorry, I should, I should have separated those. You don't have to sign that section, do you?
No, 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 second, no. All right, there we go.
Sorry about that.
I move you, oh, we're gonna do them all together.
That's the last pop.
This last pop?
Yeah.
Is that a woman counted? She has class today?
She has night class, you needed it by the day, didn't you?
Oh, here.
Dad, give it.
She says you have night class?
Yeah, she had a night class on holiday.
Good gosh.
Six thirty, six, yes, six thirty.
She's studying on there, but...
Uh, no, she's working, I never thought, I've not reminded her, she, um, I see if I can catch her before she leaves, and she may already left it. If not, I'll just, um, we'll do, I'll pay for it. And I just won't do a picture this time, unless she has her thing, um...
You can help put a picture of her in there, you can do a picture of the business.
Of the business, yeah. I don't know, Rachel got ahold of Sam, but there's, okay, water, definitely, I figured she did, but...
We're on this morning, yeah.
That's...
So that takes us through all of that crap?
No, we're, you know, that she won't be needing.
I move you...
Well, I would appreciate it, because I asked her, so...
Resolutions.
All second.
He's fine with personal weeks, aren't they? Not a problem.
I had stayed on all of them.
I did owe you.
I know, I know, you did owe me, I did owe.
We're getting back down.
We do. Yeah.
It's a good, it's a good spot for a business.
Yeah, it's a great location. You would be amazed at how many people slotted. They, did they want flowers? No, I want to know what we're doing, yeah.
Where? What? Oh. That's where she is.
Well, and I don't know if it was because of the time wide garage sales, but I mean, we didn't have anything out front, we had the pickup and the empty trailer out front. You got the picnic table, you got the whole table up there.
Well, I guess we should, that's what I'm saying, but that didn't come until...
What do we gotta do to have an executive session?
They were six thirty or so when she brought that over.
You have one every day, put on there.
All day.
Does it have to be, do you have to put on there right after?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I don't need one.
And I, I think next meeting, we're gonna have to have some adjudication concerning the nine one one situation.
I'm sorry, you're talking to me?
No, just don't be shy about it. No, we're gonna have to...
Well, yeah.
They've written several things up on one of the dispatchers, and we need to review that.
Now you wanna help? Now you wanna help?
Me?
Yeah, I've been the one going down there for a year.
You're the one who stirs the pot down there.
Do you know what, they, Chad signed this, he didn't call me on Wednesday on it.
We're probably gonna have to...
That's pretty close to it, yeah, because he was just...
I want to call Denny.
I think, I think they actually brought it over to me on Wednesday, so...
Lit, litigation deal, perhaps a representative here maybe.
Well...
So we go to...
I know, I know, we got a problem that are wanting us now.
Yeah.
Been going off for a while.
It has been, but they finally gave me a bunch of, I met with seven dispatchers last Thursday, or last Tuesday, and they gave me, each one gave me a list of grievances and problems they've had.
Good, good.
It's beyond serious.
I better tell them.
It's beyond serious.
I better tell them.
Anyway.
You gotta write something down, guys, because I can't do anything unless you got something.
Got to have documentation, that's what I told them too, you gotta have documentation.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, baby.
He beat me to it.
That's a first.